All right, let's go ahead and get the show on the road. Let's start our -- is everybody ready? Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out on a warm night. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call will show that the entire council is present. We need a vote -- a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Weinsdorf, second, Bragman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes. Our closed session action was simply a discussion. There was no direction given. I will now read our meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain standards of tolerance and civility. Town council will review the agenda at 10:00 p.m. to ascertain which items will be heard that evening and which, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter that is not started by 11:30 p.m. will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Please take this opportunity right now to turn off all cell phones or place them in silent mode. We have a number of announcements today. We have one very special announcement. Today is the two-year anniversary of our chief -- Chris Moran being our Chief of Police. So, thank you, Chris.[127.81][127.81](APPLAUSE). I snuck you up on that one, didn't I? This is the first Fairfax council meeting that will be filmed by the Community Media Center of Marin, but not broadcast. Future meetings will be available through cable casting and/or web streaming, and we have a representative from the Community Media Center of Marin who would like to make a brief statement, so I'm going to have him do that at this time. Please state your name for us.
Hello, my name is Scott Calhoun. I am the studio and government facilitator at Marin TV, otherwise known as the Community Media Center of Marin County. And first of all, we'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to bring this forum into a video documentation area, and also, we think it'll be useful for other uses as appropriate that might be in this space. Tonight's just kind of a test run. We've done the installation. We're just making sure everything's working, setting up our shots and configuring the different connections. Pending some of that configuration, we'll eventually be able to cable cast or broadcast to the county these meetings live on TV, which will be interesting. And tonight, actually, we are streaming to the Internet on a private link, and after some evaluation from us and the council, we can eventually make that link public as well. For the installation itself, we tried to be as respectful as possible about the building. We did have to do an exposed cable raceway, but we painted the parts that were on the wood, and we painted the parts that were on the white, so to kind of disguise it as much as possible. And actually, there's some unused raceway over there, which the only reason we installed it on the right side was to keep it symmetrical with the actual raceway on the left, so hopefully you guys like that. Some other concerns, we just want to add that unless there is a Marin TV staff person here onsite operating the equipment, the cameras are not functioning, recording video, or attached to any kind of video monitoring equipment in any way. So, there may be a little light on or something, but that's basically just keeping the settings that we've put in, so it's totally nothing to be concerned about. Unless there's someone there, they're basically dead. So, that's basically it, and hopefully I haven't gone over my allotment.
You did fine. Thank you very much. We're excited. We dressed up just for the occasion.[304.27][304.27](LAUGHING). Okay, other announcements. Fairfax Food Pantry, Saturdays from 9:00 to 11:00, Fairfax Community Church at 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed. One vacancy is on the Open Space Committee to complete an unexpired term to June 30th, 2014. There is a vacancy on the Fairfax Youth Commission for any Ross Valley youth between the age of 14 and 19. There's a vacancy for a youth commissioner to serve on Park and Recs Commission for a two-year term. And we also want to keep people up to date on the FEMA MAP adjustments. Another public meeting will be held in October. The date on that is not set yet, but that will be regarding insurance implications of the revised MAP. We want to make sure people know about the Streets for People event on Sunday, August 26th, from noon to 4:00. Bellinas Road between Broadway and Elsie Willby -- not Elsie -- Bank, Elsie? Elsie. Will be closed during that event, and we're going to sort of test out what that street closure looks like. There is a town picnic scheduled for Sunday, September 16th, from noon to 5:00 on Contrati Field. Any other announcements that I'm missing? Okay. This is open time for public expression, three-minute time limit per person. If you wish to address the council, please speak -- please approach the podium and state your name and address. Individuals have three minutes to speak, five minutes if you're representing a group. This is the time that is set aside for individuals wishing to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda. Yes. State law provides that the council is not permitted to take action and strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-agendized items unless it can be demonstrated to be in emergency nature and need to take immediate action after the posting of the agenda. Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy Ross, and I have three brief things I wanted to address with the council. One is, I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to stay for the entire meeting, but I just really wanted to thank you, especially in honor and memory of Stan Schreemann, who passed away a few years ago. I'm so happy to see on the agenda that you folks are taking the Brown Act seriously, even though our state is kind of messing with it, so I really, really appreciate that. Number two is, I wanted to let you know, a couple of days ago, I almost got hit by a car again trying to walk across the street getting to First Federal Bank, and I'm just wondering how I can get the conversation started to look and see if there might be a possibility for a crosswalk there, or some kind of solutions for that. And there are some other areas of the sidewalks where the sidewalks are cracked and broken. I fell a few weeks ago. My mother almost fell out of her motorized scooter, so I'm just wondering if I can get that dialogue going. And then, number three, I read in both the Patch and the IJ a few days ago that there was some funny tasting water, an algae bloom, apparently, in the reservoir, and I guess I was just a little bit concerned because I understand they're putting copper sulfate in the water to treat it, and I haven't had that much time to do that much research, but it sounds like pretty funky stuff. And I guess I'm just wondering, you know, what you folks know about that. So, thank you.
And that might be a really good question for the Water Board, too, I think, on that one. Is there other public comment?
Rose, 94 Hillside, Fairfax. I have one comment, I have two comments. One is, I hope that we will use some discretion in finding someone who's going to be manager of our town. Let's hopefully not find somebody that's going to use it as stepping stone. I hope we can find somebody who has the energy to go out and get its funding that was supposed to happen, and I haven't seen that much in the last few years. The other thing I'd like to suggest is, has anyone thought of putting up owl houses around Fairfax? We don't want pesticides used, and we have an owl house in the back, and we have owls back there. We have a vineyard next door, and they're doing a great job of getting the gophers and the rats. It wouldn't take that much to get houses around town, and those owls do a fantastic job with the rats and the gophers. It could get the schools involved, or the scouts, or whatever. The hardest part, I would foresee, is putting the poles up to put the houses up. So, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we do -- I know there is an owl house. I thought at first you said "owl houses."[614.82][614.82](LAUGHING). There is -- I know there's an owl box at Deer Park, at the school there, and I know that Sustainable Fairfax at one point was looking into getting more in town, and the people who do the owl house program are extremely particular about allowing enough territory per owl, per owls.
Right, well, the owl care people are really very, very helpful.
Yeah, so I think it's been looked at, but it certainly -- I know Sustainable Fairfax looked at it once, and I can certainly encourage them to look at it again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rose, we'll look at both issues, but even more importantly, you've been away from us for a long time. I'm glad to see your health is better, and welcome back to the room.
Thank you. Thank you.
Valerie Hood, 79 Domingo. On that thing, you know, I looked into finding out about owl houses for town. The problem is, there are too many people using decon, and the owls die when they eat the rodents that have eaten the decon, and that's why they have to make sure, and they have to check, like, every residence, every building, and I'm afraid there's a lot of people poisoning rats, and that is what kills the owls. So, that's the issue, actually.
Thank you, Valerie. Is there any other public comment at this time? Come on forward.
Good evening. My name is Doug Gilmore, and I live at 12 Portius. And I'm here tonight just to bring up an issue having to do with Deer Park Villa. I purchased the home six years ago, and just, it seems, in the last couple of months, the few strands of Christmas tree lights that highlight or punctuate the driveway has transformed into a really bright string of lights, and also, a very bright green and red open sign is now hanging on the Deer Park Villa sign entryway, and the entryway sign is also much brighter. So, that's one issue, and having just remodeled my house, I used to spend time on the deck, and it was very quiet, and at night, I could just look into a dark forest-like setting, and it was wonderful. Not so much the case now, and it seems it's every day or every night. The other issue is the noise factor. I never heard music unless there was an event. Now, I hear music when they open. And so, never having dealt with a town council before and wanting to do, you know, take the proper route, I just wanted to bring it to mind that there are a lot of lights at Deer Park Villa that weren't there a few months ago, and there's a consistent noise from 5:00 o'clock every night, and I've called the police department, and they've kindly gone out and just checked on things at midnight. And even with recently-installed double-pane windows and sliding doors all closed, I'm still hearing the music at night. So, if there's a -- if there are things that can be done, great. One thought compromise, I'd be willing to put up a fence, and that might help block out some of the lights, but the horizon line, if I put even a seven-foot fence up, that green and red sign, sort of like a light bullet, will still be there. So, I don't know if I ask questions at this point, but I don't know what to do, what procedures to take.
Okay, I'm going to maybe turn you over to Jim, who looks like he's wanting to respond.
Yep, we're aware. We received an email on this. We're on it as far as the lights and the signs concerned. We're following up on that. As regards to the noise, we have a noise ordinance, and when there's a complaint registered with the police department, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, they go out and they do a measurement, and it is at the edge of the residential property. There's a limit on the decibels. The bad news is, if it's not over those, then it's an allowable amount of noise. So, unfortunately, when you're used to something quiet for a long time and then there is some noise, it's something that's allowed up to a certain point. So, we can check to make sure it's not going over that, and we are following up on the lights and the sign for you. And just beware, you're allowed to go to six feet on that back fence, but if you want to go higher, come to me. Okay.
But, sir, I might say, we are rather fortunate these days to have our interim town manager, Judy Anderson, who could pretty much talk Oedipus into leaving home. Perhaps we could impose upon you, Judy, to work with the gentleman and the garing galleys to see if we can reach some accommodation. Even though the decibel numbers might not be over the top, the reasonableness of being good neighbors is always helpful.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you very much for coming. Any other public comment? Push the button on the base of the black -- yeah, there you go. Perfect.
My name is Grace Seepertson, and I live in Corder Madera, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at the public comment. I'd like to ask, on the topic of the genetically-modified organisms -- there's a sign right over here. We'd like to ask if we can move it from the consent calendar to the open discussion. Is that possible?
We will certainly consider that as we look at the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I leave you some flyers or some information so that you can be better informed about this topic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the end, yeah. Anybody else for open time? All right, seeing none, I will close open time and move us to council reports and comments. We'll start at the other end today. How about you, Ryan?
I have nothing to report.
I guess the main thing was, I was assigned to go to the Ross Valley Sanitary District consolidation meetings. Ross Valley Sanitary District, which has been embroiled in a lot of controversy of late, actually hired an outside consultant to do a consolidation study of the four districts in the Ross Valley, which are Ross Valley Sanitary, Corder Madera, San Rafael, and Central Marin. And so, there were a series of meetings, very interesting study that was done, which compared and -- compared and contrasted the infrastructure among the four districts because they're all -- they've all got different levels of service, they've all got different age of equipment, and what they do is they rank the equipment of each so that they can, if we did do a consolidation, they can equalize it. So, it's a pretty interesting study. They did an engineering study and financial study, and surprisingly enough, given what we know about the Ross Valley Sanitary District, they did find that a complete consolidation of all four districts would save money. So, that does not talk to things about how do you run an agency like this, which would encompass, you know, over 100,000 people? How do you tax, you know, the jurisdiction fairly, and so on and so forth? But, there's been three or four meetings on that, and so, it looks like that is going to go to the Ross Valley Sanitary District Board, which is probably a good thing for them to kind of turn the page on where they've been, and that, you know, that may come back to us in some form or another in the next few months, so we'll see. And that's about it.
Yeah, I went to a few different things. You know, various meetings around town with the Fair Buck and the Bike Spine and things like that. We'll hear about that later. One interesting thing that I went to on the town's behalf was League of Cities meeting where ABAG and MTC and, you know, were kind of presenting this sustainable communities strategy and stuff, and but importantly, you know, I mean, they had planning directors and, you know, people from a bunch of different sides of it, and if some people have been following that, it's sometimes contentious because there's a lot of housing numbers being assigned, RENA numbers, which is basically numbers of housing units that are supposed to be added to different places and, you know, adjacent to workplaces, and that coordinated with transportation projects. And it very often, it leaves cities and towns with some unfunded mandates, which don't actually necessarily solve the problems that they're trying to deal with. And it's -- it was interesting because a lot of the conversations behind the scenes between individuals from different jurisdictions were really, you know, they were kind of listening and a little bit up in arms and commenting, like, "Well, I don't know how to deal with these requirements," and, you know, talking about their own individual things, and a few people brought that up in the group, but in general, people kept quiet about it. There -- maybe the jury's out, and people don't really know how to approach the thing, the issue. It seems like from the regulation approach of the sustainable communities strategy, it's full steam ahead, in a way, and, you know, disregarding comments. I think that everybody's genuinely trying to do the right thing, it's just the tools are limited. They're unfunded, and, you know, you can only do so much by requiring people to build a certain number of houses. And it doesn't necessarily bring our greenhouse gases down, it really is how those housing and work faces is being used. So, I wish it was more conclusive to bring up. Let me see, I guess that's really the only significant thing.
David?
Just that, thank you for bringing that up. As the alternate on the committee looking at the sanitary districts, hopefully, it's moved toward consolidation. I received the draft report, I think the final report's going to come out shortly, and I can say that there is a movement among the electeds in the Ross Valley to begin to formulate a coordinated response and an overture to the sanitary district to, after all of these years, begin movement toward consolidation. So, as soon as that comes, I'll collaborate with you, Larry, and we can bring forward a conversation. Back to the council.
Must have been vacation month. I've attended a couple of Streets for People organizing events, organizing meetings, and I also had the honor of attending the Green Party National Convention and speaking and saying wonderful things about Fairfax. It's sometimes a little-known fact here in Fairfax, but our council holds a Green Party majority, and it's the only one in the entire country. And while it's a nonpartisan council, amongst the Green Party, people are like, "Yeah!" So, they asked me to speak at their presidential commission, and I went and spoke there completely at my own expense and the expense of the Marin County Green Party. But you can find the speech about wonderful things about Fairfax on C-SPAN or YouTube. But, yeah, and then enjoyed a couple of lovely weeks in Minnesota. So, light month for the council. Town manager report.
I have a question.
Okay, thank you, Judy. All right, we are at the consent calendar, and we have had a request to move six out.
And I would make that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
To remove it.
Second.
Okay, so, this is a motion to approve the consent calendar. Yes, let's -- so, we've got a motion and a second to remove that number. Are there any comments on anything else on the consent calendar?
Just one question on the finance -- sorry about that. On the finance report for the month, on the utility users' tax, we actually filed briefs this week. We filed reply briefs for the town of Fairfax with the CPUC, and one of the things that came up is that PG&E is taxing the opt-out fee. So, I will send you -- I've got a PDF of a bill where they did that, and among the smart meter activists, it's called Taxtortion, which is a blurring of extortion and taxes. It's kind of clever, I thought, but it could be, we could be in one of those situations where we're collecting too much money under the utility users' tax. It's not going to be a lot of money, but I just kind of wanted to bring it to your attention, and if anybody in the audience has opted out here that lives here in Fairfax and you get a bill, I would like to see it to see if they're taxing your opt-out fee, because that's something we're going to be wanting to address with the PUC. And that's it on that one.
Any other comments from council on the consent calendar? Are there any comments from -- other comments from the public on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. We have a motion, Bragman, second read, to approve the consent calendar, removing item number six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, our consent calendar passes. Should we address item six now, or move it to down to regular agenda?
You know, Mayor, I think there is some folks in the audience that want to speak to that item, and I think, you know, they're all here, and I think they want to line up and just make their comments.
Okay, let's go ahead and address item number six then as a part of our public hearing.
So, if anybody wants to make a public comment about item --
Do you want to tee it up and give it an introduction?
What item six is, is it's a resolution by the town council in support of Proposition 37, which is the California Right-to-Know proposition, which will enable consumers in California to know if the products they buy contain genetically-modified organisms. So, this is a very, very important consumer rights proposition, and if it passes, it could really lead to some big changes, some good changes, for consumers. You know, like smart meters, GMOs are sort of a tyranny of technology that's been imposed on us without really any democratic oversight. Nobody asks for GMOs, and consumers have no choice now. So, there's no market choice for a consumer who doesn't want GMOs. So, there's really no mechanism to give people the opportunity to not consume GMOs. And we know now, from more recent research, which has been published recently, this book called Genetic Roulette sets out all the studies, that some of these genetically-modified organisms have allergens. In other words, there's genes put in them that folks are allergic to. And obviously, you know, this is a health concern for consumers, and we know there's environmental impacts of GMOs because of the increase in the use of pesticides associated with GMOs. And the last thing I want to say about it is that the consequences of this technology are not only dire to our health and the environment, but they're dire to our democracy, because integral to GMOs are privatization of our food system, and it creates sort of an indentured servitude for small farmers to the seed companies. So, really, Proposition 37 not only is a consumer rights proposition, it's a farming rights proposition, and I think that's a very important message that the voters of California have to understand and hopefully will understand. And so, I'd love to hear from the community.
Thanks very much for, you know, considering doing this. I think the other night, we had a symposium in San Rafael, and there were maybe 350 or so people there. It will be on Comcast on Channel 26. Also, there was a great interview by Lena Berman on Your Own Health and Fitness this last week on Tuesday at 1:00. You can hear that in an archive if you want to, you just go to yourownhealthandfitness.org, and I think Jeffrey Smith outlines the problem really well there. So, one of the main reasons that I've been working on this so much is that I think that when we pass resolutions, when we talk about it, when we have symposiums, we educate people because my experience is that most people don't understand biology at all. So, the idea of understanding what DNA is, is pretty far away from most people's reality. And what, one of the things that I learned the other night that I thought was so horrific is that when they inject, say, a fish gene or a BT gene into the DNA of some other, of a plant, they're just, they just stab it in. They don't really know where it's going in the chain, they don't really know what the consequences are, but the way they're marking it is using toxic viruses and toxic bacterias. And they're toxic to us, and they're replicating, and they're now finding them replicating in our guts, and they don't know how long it takes to clear. There was a really good show the other day, and they were talking about livestock that's been getting sick from GMO crops and children who have, and other people, and so they've been telling, when they've taken people off of a GMO diet strictly, no GMO at all, people are actually getting better. So, they're actually having some really good medical studies now that they can look at, and I don't think most people realize that most of our meat that we eat is eating GMO crops, and they're not really sure what happens when you lice or -- And they're not really sure what happens when you lice or chop up GMO. But they, it's sort of like that Bill Moyer show, I don't know if you ever saw it, on 60 Minutes, where they did a blood sample and they found 60 types of PCBs in his blood and several types of dioxins. And he said to the chemist, "So what does that do in my body?" And they said, "We have no idea. We know that each one of these is toxic enough to kill you, but we have no idea what happens when they mix." And that's what's happening with all this GMO in your gut that's been spliced up. It's maybe the craziest thing we've ever heard. And the other point is about the Terminator seeds, which means that your seed is no longer viable. That means Monsanto, DuPont, Huacargill, you name it, owns, owns it from, from cradle to grave. It's insanity, I think. These people have gone completely crazy, and I commend our council for pointing that out in some way.
Thank you Valerie.
Come on up.
Hi, my name is Adina Beaumont, and I actually live in San Rafael, and I wanted to commend you for bringing this topic to the public notice, because very few people know about it, and I'm hoping that this will be the start of dissemination, and also that you will encourage, I don't know how, but other councils to get on board with this, because it's absolutely vital that we have the choice to decide if we want GMO or not. I mean, we have the choice to turn on a TV channel, and food is thousands of percent more important than a TV channel, so we've gotta get this out, and I'm not quite sure how to do it, but thank you for doing this and being on board, and this is the double fingers. If you can all do this, we'll get it through, and Prop 37 will pass, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Neil?
Thank you.
Push it by one more time. You were, you were already on. There you go.
Hello, I'm Neil Kraus. I'm a local resident here for many years, and I wanna, again, thank you for bringing this to an important issue for the town, for, for all of us. I'm a chiropractor in San Anselmo, and I've talked to many of my patients about this issue of the GMOs, and most of them don't know about GMOs. It's surprising, with all of the attention that many of us have been inundated with. So I really appreciate that this has come to this level of importance for our town. And I'm proud of you for making that happen, I hope that it does pass. The, as we've heard, the notion of genetically-modified organisms being put into our food is terrifying to many of us, and, and unknown its effect, short-term and long-term. And we're right on the cusp of this spreading genetically throughout the world. And most of the world has said, "No, we don't want it." You know, our country is trying to force it down the throats, literally, of all of us. And it really doesn't belong there. Most of the world knows that. I hope that Fairfax is successful in educating not only our own residents, but maybe we can somehow encourage other towns, other, within Marin or broader scope, to look at this and see how they can make this a successful campaign. So anyway, thank you for making this important. Appreciate it.
Thanks Neil.
Hello, my name is Grace Severson again. I'm working as are quite a few people in the audience with coalitions labeled GMOs, genetically-modified organisms, and also the Right-to-Know. So there's quite a few of us, a lot of other groups that are working together to educate the public about, yes, Proposition 37. I wanted to just mention, the flyers that I left here, one of them is a flyer, it's from the GMO Free Marin Education Project, and so Marin is already a GMO-free county, and this would be a nice linkage to support Proposition 37, yes. And I just wanna mention a couple of things to be aware of in your food that are highly, if they're not organic or labeled non-GMO, corn, cotton, soy, and canola are four of the major ones. And if the package says natural, that doesn't mean anything. It has to be non-GMO or organic. The other thing is that over 50, 50 other countries in the, in the world, excluding the, excluding the US, 50 other countries, including China and some other countries, do have labeled GMOs on their, on their packaging of food. So I guess it's time for us to catch up. And I wanted to mention also that Jeffrey Smith, who wrote Seeds of Deception and also this latest book, Genetic Roulette, in his first book, Seeds of Deception, he, he's done lots of studies, he's been studying this for, since the 90s, and gone on many, he's on a circuit right now throughout California, educating the public. In his first book, he has about 12 different stories, farmers in the different parts of our country who have, whether it be cows, geese, rats, or any certain animal, animals, farm animals. The farmers noticed, when they would give their animals GMO food, and then the other side would be non-GMO, they all tended to go toward the non-GMO. So that's almost like nature is telling us something, it's like the canary in the mine. So, and if Rachel Carson were here, remember Rachel Carson, she wrote Sid and Spring. It took 20 years for this country to outlaw DDT, 20 years, and I hope it doesn't take us another 20 years, by then it'll be too late for our children. If she were here today, she would certainly be here at this podium, supporting us. And I just wanna say one more thing, for your children's health and safety, food safety, please, help us, spread the word, tell your friends, do what they can. The public officials who have now taken a public stand are Barbara Boxer, Jared Huffman, Mark Leno, Assemblyman Michael Allen, and also the Democratic Party have taken a yes on Prop 37, and the California Federation Union. So we've got the momentum going, and now we're gonna ask Lynn Woolsey to get on board. Okay, thank you so much, thank you, for our children.
Thank you very much. Cindy?
Hi, yeah, I just have a quick question about Prop 37 itself, because I, I have to admit, I have not actually read the full text. So am I understanding, is it just as far as labeling, or is, does it go a step further in terms of, you know, say banning, or taking any steps toward banning, or, because I, I guess I'm just wondering how we're dealing with that. I mean, I'm assuming that the, you know, that the good earth is not purchasing any, any GMO food, is what, I'm, I don't know what's going on with, you know, our, our other market, the Fairfax market, or even places like 7-Eleven, or Don's Market, or stuff like that. But I'm just wondering, you know, if there's a way to take it a step further in terms of just not having local markets purchasing foods, you know, so that, I mean, it's one thing to know what we're eating and to have that choice, but if somebody's going into a store and that's the only corn that's available, or whatever it is, you know, I, I would just like to see it go a step further.
Thank you. Larry, do you wanna speak to the...
Could I just say something? It's, it's strictly a labeling law, and, and the philosophy behind it is that if consumers get a choice and are given the information they need to make a choice, that they will be like the geese and the ducks and the cows, and migrate towards non-GMO products. So, I mean, that's the idea, is to give folks choice. Here in Marin, we passed Measure B back in 2004, which prohibits the growing of GMOs locally. And we were able to do that because it doesn't have an impact on interstate commerce. But to do that on a state level, you know, it just brings up a whole host of legal issues, and that is where these corporations, you know, they, that's where they wanna be. They wanna take it away from the voters, put it into court, make their intellectual property arguments, and, you know, find that legal crease that'll get them protection. And right now, I know with the AG bill that's in front of the House, there's efforts being made to prohibit state regulations on food labeling. So, you know, they are ceaseless in their efforts to protect their intellectual property and protect their profits. And anyway, the, the short answer is, this is a labeling law, and we feel that if, you know, consumers are given clear labels, that the market will decide.
And I think it'll also give our, the, an opportunity for our local merchants to know what they're buying. And I think that that's part of the challenge, is that without anything being labeled, even our, you know, even, good earth, I'm guessing, does their due diligence, a lot of other stores don't always, you know, aren't, aren't willing to research as far as they are on things. So it'll give, it'll give our local markets an opportunity to, to make those decisions too. Turn your mic on, back on one.
Yeah, just one more quick thing, because I mean, I realize this is probably a far longer conversation than, than we have time for right now, but I, I am concerned about cost factors, and I don't mean that, I, I mean, I think this is something we really need to do, but I am concerned about, you know, certain foods being prohibitive, prohibitively expensive, or people, you know, maybe not being as educated consumers because they're concerned about their pocketbook and stuff like that. So I, I feel like there are a lot bigger issues, you know, and, I mean, I would love it if everybody could afford to eat safe, healthy food, so.
Say something about that. Right now, farmers that are using GMOs are locked into that GMO seed. And, and that has really taken the place of saving seed, where farmers are not in debt, are not in hock, to a seed company every year to replace their seed. So there may be a period of adjustment, where, you know, it takes a while for the conventional crops to be, to get that acreage, to replace, you know, the GMOs that presumably are not gonna get purchased by consumers once they know what it is. So there is gonna be some transition. But we know from our experience before we had GMOs, that our country had the largest agricultural output of corn and soy of any nation on the planet, and it was increasing not by pesticides, but by really developing sustainable practices, which ultimately are far less expensive to our economy and to our health. So, you know, I, I think, I think the, the economics of it are there, and it's just, it's gotta be given a chance to go through.
Thanks Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one last public comment, come on up.
My name is Kathy Eagle.
We hit the button on the base of the other, on the black one?
Yes, perfect. My name is Kathy Eagle, and I live in San Anselmo.
Hit the button one more time, sorry. There you go. You can just let, you can let go once you click it. There you go.
My name is Kathy Eagle, I am from San, San Anselmo, I live there, so I just wanted to come in support of labeling for the GMOs, and to say that I stand with the council and everybody here on getting it labeled, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Got one more. Hi Patty. Oh, click it one more time. Once more.
Click it to the light sticker.
There you go.
A light, okay, I'm Patty Brett, I'm a Fairfax resident. I'm here, I'm a proponent of the labeling campaign to label GMOs. A couple of points I wanted to make was that, coming from food and industry, food and beverage industry, I think it would be great to get our local restaurants to include that they're serving non-GMO foods, sort of as a, another way of supporting this, this campaign. And then about farming, is that, sort of a point to what Ms. Ross said, is that our country spends much more water on making energy than farming, and water is one of the biggest expenses of farming. And what's happened with farming is that it's turned into petroleum-product-based farming, rather than farming, toiling the soil with labor and, and water. So the, the non-GMO campaign would take farming sort of back to, to where it should be, as opposed to oil byproducts. That's just what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Not that you need more people, but I just wanna commend you and thank you for bringing this proposal forward. I think it's imperative for all of us to have a choice and see that, you know, even those that want to buy GMO can select GMO products. So it gives us a choice, and I think it's very important that this truth come out, and hopefully will evolve from this, and people will be educated by it, but mainly, number one, that we're given labeling and information, that we can be given a choice, and I thank you for doing this.
Thanks Bonnie. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Comments from council?
Mayor, I would just move approval of the resolution.
We've got motion, Bragman, second, O'Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, it passes. Thank you, everybody, thank you Larry. And I know that we have a lot of activists here in Fairfax who have really made this one move, and a lot of those signatures that got this on the ballot were collected here, so, well, well done Fairfax. Onto the rest of our public hearing, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 768, ordinance to town council of town of Fairfax to set the animal control fees and establish a process to adopt future fees by council resolution. Judy, take it away.
Thank you. As you know, at the last meeting, we adopted an urgency ordinance so that the fees could go into effect. These are county-wide fees, all the towns and cities have adopted similar ordinance with the same fees. We did something extra with the ordinance, as I mentioned last time, and that is, we included language to make it so that we can adopt future fees by resolution, so we don't have to go through the ordinance process. But this is the second stage of this ordinance process, the second reading and adoption, so I would recommend that we, that you waive further reading and, and then do a motion to adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Imagine that, a streamlining government process. Comments from council?
I just have a question, Judy. So what we're doing is passing an ordinance which will allow us to, to adjust the fees by resolution?
Yeah, we included language in the ordinance so that future, when we adopt it by reference for the Humane Society and the county, that we can do it by resolution. That's what most of the cities and towns do.
Right, instead of going through a formal ordinance process.
Instead of going through a whole ordinance process to change.
Okay, I wasn't here for the first...
Oh, there you go, yeah. Well, that was, that's the logic behind it, okay.
That makes sense. Okay, thanks a lot.
Any other comments from council? Any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion to waive further reading and read the title only?
Yes.
Is that motion, motion Weinsdorf, second? Second read, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we pass the motion to waive. We also need a motion to adopt ordinance number 678, ordinance to town council of town of Fairfax to set animal control fees and establish a process to adopt future fees by council resolution.
No motion.
Motion Weinsdorf, second read, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for efficiency. Item number eight, adoption of Resolution 1251, resolution of the town council of town of Fairfax adopting the 2012, it says 2012, 2012 budget.
I just wanna introduce the topic before our finance director takes hold. I just wanna acknowledge all of his hard work on this budget, and how much better it looks, how much easier it is to read. We're delighted with the product, and I just wanted to commend him because he's worked very hard to get to this point. I'll let him introduce the budget, okay? Thanks.
I shouldn't even try to follow that, you realize that? Thank you Judy. The check's in the mail. This is the second reading and hopefully the adoption of the town of Fairfax Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. At the last meeting that we had, we went through the budget item by item and answered questions that people had at that time, and we came up with several items that we wanted to look at and do corrections about. I've included those on, on the errata sheet, and detailed those in the staff report. Basically, this year's budget... Basically, this year's budget, under instructions from the previous town manager, we were told that we were going to not, not do increases unless we had to. So this is sort of a, a holding pattern type budget. There's no big projects that we're going out after with this one. We have included certain new revenues that we've got from the sales taxes and from the recently passed garbage contract. Basically, those have been incorporated in here, and I've also incorporated some of the new revenues that the police department has negotiated with our new dispatch services with Ross and with the College of Marin, which, for which it's not apparent that we will have any increase in expenses against, against it. So it's, it's a good way to share government costs without having to increase, you know, the, a burden from that. So it's, there's an efficiency that kind of flows through this budget that I'm sort of pleased to see. So, basically, what I've done in this, in this is tried to, uh, set aside some additional reserves for our retirement fund. You'll notice that last week, we talked about retirement costs. Even the retirement costs will, will be covered by the, the municipal, by, by the pension override tax that we had. I'm still putting in here that we're going to transfer $100,000 over to our retirement account in order to have a reserve there for future expenses, in the event that the, you know, that we don't have those kind of revenues in the future. This is strictly moving money from the undesignated part of general fund over to a designated part of general fund. So there's no additional expense that's involved with it. It's merely a transfer or a, or a, a setting aside of funds for those kind of future purposes. So we don't have an expense that's going to go against that. I just wanted, I just felt it was better for us if we had some reserve in that, in that area. And, uh, so in this year's budget, we have, uh, we have what I would call a slight deficit, okay? We have revenues that are going to be collected in the general funds, and I use a plural term here, because a lot of these funds that we've got are actually designation of fund balance for specific purposes. And in the presentation, I, I show that those funds, what, what the change in their, in their cumulative balance is. So we have revenues of $6,400,000 this year against expenses of $7,92,000. We have certain transfers that are going to come in and help offset that, but in total, the general funds will, are showing a decrease of $107,000. Now, I have not gone in and, and tried to make that up through transfers from the dry period reserve or anything like that. My opinion is that just on, just on the savings that we've got off of the town manager, by virtue of the fact that we've budgeted that position, but we're not going to have the expense for that for a significant portion of the year, that will make up that $100,000. Just as this last year, we had a similar type of thing. We had projected a budget shortage of about $230,000. We ended up breaking about even because of increase in, in revenues that we had over what we had expected. We had some ERAF expense, revenues that we didn't budget for that helped us out, and we also had salary savings along the way that helped just about balance that also. So the way that our budget is structured here, as presented, we're actually going to be showing that any balance that we've got, that is short of what the revenues that we've got is coming out of fund balance, but I am confident that this is not going to end up being that way. And I don't think it's something where we want to actually say that we're not going to fund a town manager position, uh, as an example. So what I'd like to do, rather than go through the budget, is open it up to the council for areas that you'd like to talk about, or get more information on, any, any adjustments that we've got. I do have a minor adjustment before we adopt a budget resolution, an adjustment that I saw in, in carryforward total, which I have dollar amounts for. So when we get to that point, I'd like to be a, a correct capital improvement number, so that we are adopting a budget that's equal to the detail sheets that I've got in the budget. So with that, I'd like to give it to the council.
Other council members, comments? Larry?
Just have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So the last time I was at a budget hearing, there was discussion about whether the pension override tax actually was in surplus, which I've, we discovered, I think, it's not. And that's why you're setting aside, or you're designating a reserve to cover pension deficit.
Right. It, it is the policy that, I guess, per Michael Rock, and the, and he said it, this had been confirmed by the attorney in, previous to that point, that the override tax includes expenses that we have for the fire department, which is designated here sort of as a contract, rather than being specific. It's not, it's not pension that we pay directly ourselves to CalPERS, but it is paid. It is a pension portion of our fire contract. And so I had not included that. It's not, not something that I was aware of in the way that we did present numbers, and, and we, we brought that to light in the last hearing.
Okay, yeah, okay. And I, and I'm familiar with, with that issue. And the other thing, the other, I've got two other questions. The other thing I wanted to know about was the OPEB, which is the post-employment benefits, where we were going to make a contribution to that? It's like a trust to cover future medical? So...
That's correct. CERTB, I believe is the acronym for the trust that we have set up for the post-employment health benefits. And we have in the miscellaneous section, miscellaneous budget is on page forty-two, let's see, is that where I have it? Yes. On page forty-two, I have a, a contribution designated here to the OPEB. We had made a contribution in 2010 for $120,000. And in the proposed budget for 2012, 13, I have shown $60,000, six zero thousand.
Okay, so that is going forward. And that, that basically sets up an investment fund to cover retiree health, correct?
Correct. My understanding is we have a guaranteed return of about 4% that we're getting on this, and so, you know, it's to our benefit to put money over into that, let it earn that kind of a rate, rather than our magnificent rate of .3% through LAIF.
Yeah, I've, I've actually heard there's negative interest rates being charged in some, some other countries. So that, wait, that's, that's what we can look forward to. And then the last thing is on the dry period fund. Are we making contribution into that to increase that, or what was the decision on that?
Right. The, the decision was, as the, as Michael Rock had, had proposed, and gotten a positive feedback from the council on, was the 200-some-odd-thousand that we had transferred over to cover last year's deficit would be paid back into the dry period fund at about $40,000 per year.
So that's, and that's, that's in this budget, too?
In this budget, we are showing, in, in, if you look at page one, as a summary, it shows the dry period fund will be increased by $40,000.
Okay, good, good. That's all the questions I have. Thanks a lot.
John, other, David?
I took the opportunity to reach out to one of our more famous gadflies on budget issues, and I said, this is your opportunity, over a couple of conversations, to come in and express concerns over the budget. And obviously, by absence, we can assume assent. But I, every year, turn to our elected town treasurer and, and ask, because I think it's very important, as an independent elected official, to share with us your thoughts of the budget, and whether you have comfort with it, and to help guide us toward our ultimate decision, whether to approve or to correct this budget. So when the time is appropriate, I would, I would love to hear.
John?
Yeah, I, I guess, especially with the news back from CalPERS and stuff, and, you know, hearing 4%, it sounds like a really big number, because they came back with one instead of seven and a half projected. So, yeah, I mean, I think we've got some surprises down the road, or maybe they won't be surprises, but unfortunate news at any rate. And also going forward, I mean, we don't know when we're going to find our next perfect town manager and things like that. And one of the discussions that has been knocked around somewhat here is Public Works and things like that. I know that Public Works Director, especially, you know, they tend to bring in a lot more money to the town, and so, you know, in terms of grants and things like that. So, um, yeah, I, I can only be confident going forward that we can make some positive improvements for the town, but still keep a balanced budget. We're as close to balance as we can. So, thanks.
Ryan, did you have?
Overall, I'm, I'm so pleased. I really am. I mean, as someone who was paying attention to a lot of these things and trying to find answers in the past years, as my first budget, as a council member that I've been able to go through, you really made my job very easy. And, and it's frustrating that the amount of hours our, our staff and our council has spent trying to find the truth in the numbers, and how many man-hours are spent combating the unknown. You've removed that. And, and not only, you know, Councilman Weinsdorf brings up a great point, that the people who, who throw stones at us saying, hey, these are wrong, why doesn't this make sense? They have all the right to do that when we can't provide the answers. And what you've done for us is provide the answers, and not only that, by being able to discuss this in an open forum like this over a few months, and having nobody show up to challenge the information, puts us at a great advantage to not spin our wheels for nothing the next time they do have an issue, because we can simply say to them, hey, where were you? You know, so if you're watching, this was your chance to come say what's going on. And I'm really happy that you made it so easy for people to find the answers that they need and give us time back. And I think that that's the, the great lesson from what you've done for us, is you've really, there's very few things that give you time back, and, and this is one of them. You're going to allow us and the staff to, to concentrate on, on, on progress in other areas and not have to try to fight the unknown. So I'm really proud of what you did here, and I'm really grateful for your work.
All right, let me, I, I just want, my questions got answered, and I echo all the, all the good things. I know being on the Finance Committee the last two years has been really helpful to get a better grasp of what the budget is, but I know as I came in as an, of, you know, early in my council years, it was like, what is this? So thank you. I think this is helpful, not only for the council, but it's really helpful for the public, and for the people who serve on our committees and commissions and staff who, who have to track their budgets. So thank you very much for that. Why don't we give Barbara a chance to speak, and then we'll have public comment?
Barbara Petty, 272 Forest, Town Treasurer. First of all, I just wanted to reiterate all the positive feedback on the way you've recapped all of the funds. I mean, coming from a nonprofit background and seeing all the funds, um, before, and not being able to see it in the town's budget, has been really difficult to figure out what's going on. And this gives a really clear picture of not only what's going on in the general fund, but all the other funds. I mean, it's just a really nice, clear snapshot of our fund balances and what we're, we're budgeting. I think that all the numbers are pretty much the same, except for a few tweaks here and there, as what we went through, but with a lot of detail back in June. And I think there was some direction from the Town Council, putting money in different funds, which is in here. So, and if you look at the expenses, they're really in line with, with what has gone on in the last year or, or two years. So I don't see anything in here that raises any kind of red flag, or, uh, is anything to be concerned with. I feel pretty comfortable with it. And I, Michael and I spoke again today, and he's been very conservative, as they have been in the last year or two, with revenues. So hopefully, there'll be more revenues and, and fewer expenses, and it'll be even better than, than what this budget portrays. So, I don't...
Thank you. Thank you for, for your service during this time, too. Other public comment on the budget? All right, seeing none, I'll close our public comment and bring it back to you, Michael, because you wanted to make a tweak on it.
On the resolution that we have, there, there are three elements to that. One is the general fund, the second is the capital improvement projects, and the third is other projects. I didn't include in the capital project total, the balance of expenditures for Fund 53, which is $171,000. So therefore, on the resolution, page two, item four, says that two, 1.225711 is hereby appropriated for capital improvement projects, programs. I'd like to amend that to 1.396711. That's an increase of $171,000.
Will you say that number one more time? Okay, with that change, so I've got a couple of motions here that we need to get through. Correct? I need, we need a motion to, well, we've held the, we need, we need a motion to approve...
The resolution.
Uh, do we have a number for the resolution, or where?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, just didn't get on there. It's 1251.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve Resolution 1251, adopting the fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget.
Some of it.
Uh, motion Weinsdorf?
Second.
Second, Bregman, gotcha. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, our budget carries. Thank you. Well done. Do, is there another motion? Are you on that, or no? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, well done. Thank you very much. Should we go to our regular agenda, or take a break? Little break? Little break? Short break? Short break. A little coffee for Ryan. Councilmember Reed?
Mayor Reed? I can introduce this topic, just because...
Yes, please do that.
I wanted to draw attention to the fact that I put the maps up. I don't think anybody's here to really, is interested in this item, but this is, uh, these are the maps that the group has been working with. And John and Larry sit on this committee, so they can explain it to you, but I, Lyndon Neal helped me. We put these up today, thinking people might want to see what's happening in their neighborhood or whatever. So they're there, if you want to use them.
Thank you. I'll let John or Larry have at it. Go.
I can start out. I mean, especially from here, the maps are gray rectangles. Basically, this bike spine project is an enhancement, it's, it's, as a wayfinding way for, that lets both kids getting to school, as well as motorists and other people in the area, know which way to go. And basically, we've been working with David Parisi, who is unfortunately not here tonight, but he's a well-known bicycle pedestrian traffic engineer. He's worked with us on various safe routes to school projects, and he's very competent on a lot of work in, around the county, and up in Portland, and all over the place. He's very much in demand. So we were lucky to have him working with us here, and since he knows Fairfax so well, he was overjoyed, actually, to be working on this project with us. And it does a number of things. There's signage along the length of the spine, as well as street markings, which will be green in color, and four feet wide, I think, by 10 feet long. And they'll look familiar in that they have a bicycle with a couple of Chevron, you know, arrows, saying which way the traffic goes. And it basically says, go this way. And there's also some traffic controls in some areas, in the form of stop signs. And we've also got some new crosswalks, um, set up, and, um... And, um, and Judy is bringing a illustration of, this is the signage, um, and arrows that tell you which way to go. It starts out at the Cascade Gates, which is an area which collects a number of different neighborhoods, comes down along Bellinas, turns here next to Town Hall and the Firehouse, comes along Park Road right in front of the Women's Club, goes down as far as Spruce, and then because in, depending on which way you're going, west towards the schools or east coming back, the sightlines are different, so that it is actually quite dangerous to take Sequoia Western, in a westerly direction because of how cars park and the way the road bends. And so, the route goes up along Arroyo Road. There's a blind corner there, which a stop sign is being added to. And then it comes up to Scenic, and the recommendation is to put a three-way stop sign at that intersection. Then it turns left and goes along Scenic, up to Manor Road, goes along Manor Road, down to Manor Circle, and then it comes out to Drake, and then follows the existing bicycle, bike lanes along there. At that point, the markings change a little bit, but they'll be in the bike lane. And they'll continue all the way down. There's a, a branch that goes off to Manor School, or Elementary School, Cascade Canyon Schools along there, and then finally, White Hill Middle School is at the terminus of the project. The project has, right now, it's got indications for signage going along Chemran, which ends up on Lefty Gomez Field, through a, a right-of-way there. And there's also a sidewalk along Drake. That sidewalk is only five feet wide, and it was connected to by, earlier this summer, by a, a granite path that the school district put in along the edge of Lefty Gomez. David Perisi felt that that five-foot-wide sidewalk was not enough to carry all of that traffic, foot traffic and bicycle traffic. And so he recommended signing along Chemran to connect also with a right-of-way that, I guess it's an easement technically, that connects to the edge of Lefty Gomez Field. It, uh, it, it's kind of seen by the people there as, as a big step, raising awareness, and maybe as, you know, down the road indicating something along Alima Road would also be good, because that's also a bike route, and it's also a way that a lot of kids going to White Hill Middle School use. And so, I mean, kids kind of know about it, but this, primarily for elementary school and kids just getting to know it, you know, it's good to say, this is where we figured out it's safest. I know that when my son was just learning how to ride a bike and getting to school that way, I worked a lot with Safe Routes to School, and we figured out, you know, the safer routes to go. And, um, and then talking 10 years later with people who basically reinvented the same process, they came up with different answers. And working with those parents and, you know, Safe Routes to School people and, and, you know, kind of digesting the new information, the old information, we met with David Perisi, and he analyzed the various intersections and the routes to come up with his recommendation on that, so that we could get a clear answer. Because there were the same ongoing discussions between parents of which way is safer, and everybody would kind of pick their own way and kind of wandering through the back streets that way. So we're hoping that, that various traffic controls and indications, oh, and I, I should say that returning along that route in an easterly way, coming down Manor and then onto Scenic, then it, the route turns right and Sequoia, and follows Sequoia along, and then rejoins the other half of that circle around Arroyo and Sequoia at the end of Park Road here. So, um, let me see, I guess that's the route in words, so I probably left out a little bit, but who knows? Maybe it's better for questions, or maybe Larry, you have more things to add?
No, I mean, just for the public, what little there is here. Good to see you. It's, um, it's kind of our way of creating a green lane for bicyclists, a safe way for bicyclists. We don't really have enough right-of-way to really create separate lanes, which is really the ideal thing for safety and also to eliminate the conflicts between motorists and bikes, which, you know, has recently become more of an issue. But what this is gonna do, it's gonna, it's a pretty innovative program, because it's gonna use these torch-down logos, so it's very bright, and it's gonna get the attention of motorists and bikers, you know, immediately. So that's the idea, that, you know, as soon as a motorist is on the route, they're gonna know, this is a safe route, this is for students, and they need to kind of slow down and, and keep their eyes open. So that's the premise behind it. There are some of these torch-down logos are used on Market Street in San Francisco, so we're kind of trying to catch up a little bit with, you know, the, the more innovative Public Works design. So I think that's really interesting. And, um, you know, make it safer for the kids and, and, you know, encourage them to be biking and walking to school. Ultimately, that's, that's our goal. So, I think, you know, it's gonna put us in the forefront, as far as, you know, safe routes is concerned, which is kind of nice, because, you know, we may inspire this to go into other jurisdictions and, you know, create green lanes throughout Marin, including from here to San Rafael, which is a very difficult passageway for bikes. So we're still working on that one, but this is a beginning.
Well, I'm excited. I know this is many, many years in the making, a lot of hard work from our council members, and I appreciate that. Can we, for the public's sake of the public, where is the funding coming for this project?
Where it's coming from is, we identified a couple different little pools of money at TAM. So this is not coming, this is being funded exclusively through Transportation Authority of Marin, which is funded through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So it's kind of this very complex little web of transportation money that we were able to identify, and I think, you know, our pleas were heard by the agency, and, you know, they set it aside, we had a traffic accident here, right when this got funded. So that was kind of the, one of the things we used to convince them that this was a good investment, because we'd had a, a close-to-serious accident. Actually, the student was not really seriously injured, but it was a scary situation. So that actually kind of got the ball rolling, and it actually was only about a year ago. So this has been a pretty quick thing. We've had great help from Jim, from everybody on staff. So it's, it's, it's actually evolved pretty quickly for a public project.
Yeah, it, it's actually phenomenally fast. I remember it took over 10 years to get the crossroad walk put in...
Right.
...at Oak Tree Lane across there, Francis Drake, and, you know, so this, this is amazing, if you're used to the bureaucratic process. And I should probably also add that, yes, this is all money that came from TAM, and they do see it as a pilot program. I've been approached by council members from several other cities and towns in Marin. They're, you know, very eager to see how it comes out and what it looks like, and then, of course, they'll want it, too.
Right.
But, you know, that's, they've said that. And very often, these grants come with the requirement of matching funds from the local town, and I'm happy to say, this one did not, partly because of its pilot nature. But no money from Fairfax, aside from the salary of our staff who was conferring on it. But basically, we were using consultants for the bulk of the work, and that was all paid for with TAM money also.
Wonderful. Ryan?
Well, I had a thought that hit me when I got back from vacation on something like this, because I, I can see the maps and I understand, I'm kind of a map guy, and I can get the route, but a lot of people don't read maps well, and it's hard to look at it in, in a, in a form where you get a real good view. And, and an aspect of all the hard work that you guys have all put in on this, and our staff, from a marketing standpoint, I got the concept of putting a GoPro camera on a handlebar of a child and riding the entire route, and putting that up on our website, or putting that up on your marketing aspect, because a lot of people are visual learners, some people look at maps. But some people just, you know, like that whole being taken on the route, and it also is a way for them to show kids how the route works, how it looks. So once you get it all done, you just take a 10-year-old or an adult, put it on the handlebar or a helmet. A helmet may be a great idea, because if you put the GoPro camera on the helmet, when you come to the stop sign, you actually look left, and then you look right, and it'll actually give the moment of the whole trip. And when you finish the filming, it's not that the whole film is gonna be on a 10-minute ride, it'll be sped up to be about a minute and 20 seconds of, you know, a little of this, and then a little of this, come to a stop, start again, get the route down. It'll, it'll be a nice way to advertise it, market it, and also teach the younger group the, the lessons that, and how it's done. And I think it would be a great marketing piece for showing other neighborhoods how it would be done.
Nice. Yeah, Larry?
That's, that's a very sagacious recommendation, and I, I think we actually discussed that with David Perisi. So, very, very interesting, and I, I do agree, it's a lot easier for most of us, like me, to actually understand it that way, rather than by the two-dimensional map. So, good one.
Well, I think it's also nice that a big part of the route is this route that is used every year during the back-to-school ride, that, that, you know, all the kids kind of do together, starting at the, you know, starting at the Town Hall. So I think that's another opportunity to maybe guide people on that. I know I've been on Safe Routes rides with my daughter, where they teach you how to ride with your kid and that kind of stuff, too. So it might be good to, you know, once everything's in place, to have a little demo ride or something like that, for people to get used to it, either before. When is it gonna be on the road?
I think we might, we might have this thing out for bid September, so maybe build it in October. It's quick. It's gonna be a quick build.
But it won't be for back-to-school?
Uh, it will be a little late for back-to-school, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, I mean, we're gonna roll it out for comments and things, too, that, and, and just informationally also to the back-to-school things. You know, it will, hopefully, David will be here next month to present this again. Have we heard from him?
He's not available on September 5th, but he's...
He's not?
I told him we'll get him at some point at a public meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that would be important. Earlier, I had met with the homeowners association down along Chemran at the, at the western end of this. At that point, David's final recommendation for that was not out, but White Hill School had just built the new pathway that connected to the sidewalk. And there was a discussion there, at that meeting, where they were saying, well, we're assuming that it's all gonna be going around the neighborhood, because that's where the sidewalk is. I did send emails to contact people that I had in that homeowners, I mean, that was their yearly meeting, that they discussed that at. So, um, I guess as the timing of that worked out, I mean, I, I think it's important to get comment from them. I had not heard back from anybody that I emailed about this meeting, letting them know that these changes were there, but that, that, you know, the public comment period is certainly now. So I think it's an exciting new project, and I'm hoping we hear positive comments.
Any other comments from council, or I'll send to the public? We take the public comment. Cindy?
Hi, Cindy Ross again. You know, I, I've got, I've got a couple of things that I, that are on my mind about this, just in terms of talking about Chemran Court. Now, I, I haven't been there for a while, but I actually briefly lived on Chemran Court when we had the fire at our house a few years ago. And I, I'm just a little bit, I, I guess I'm a little bit unclear on that right now, because to me, having, it, it was kind of a disastrous street, as far as all of the cars and traffic and congestion and stuff like that. I'm just a little bit concerned about if there's a safe path, or if that's gonna be built, or I, I guess I'm just not understanding what, I can't spit it out. I, I'm just wanting to make sure that it really is indeed a safe route going through Chemran Court. And then also, I mean, this, to me, this sounds great, but at the same time, I, I am wondering, as somebody who lives on the east end of town, we have, I mean, in theory, it sounds good that we have bike lanes and stuff like that, but it is such a disaster right now, down in the area around Good Earth, Lansdale Avenue, Center Boulevard. Um, you know, I'm, I'm just really, really concerned about, you know, I mean, this sounds great for a certain part of town, certainly most of the kids that are going to Manor School and White Hill, et cetera, live maybe more, you know, downtown and, and west. But I know as somebody that, my, my own son went to Manor School and to White Hill, and except for briefly when we were living on the west end of town, I mean, it, it was too unsafe for him to ride a bicycle. It, it really was. I mean, it, it was a nightmare situation. So I, I just would love it if, at some point, there would be something that would address all of Fairfax tying us together. I mean, right now, literally, it, it's funny at times, and I know there's been a lot of stuff in the patch and in the IJ and, and all this stuff, and I feel like, once again, I've become public enemy number one, you know, because of some of the things that I've said. But I'm not exaggerating when I say that my own son, this was a few years ago, but my own son was hit by another cyclist, and I thought I was gonna have a heart attack when I realized that she was a Safe Routes to School bicycle safety instructor. And she very literally could have killed my kid, because she was just completely oblivious and then yelling and swearing at him. Anyway, I, I know my time's up, but, but I just hope that you'll consider us folks on the east end of town, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you want to address the Chemran Avenue, or the Chemran Court?
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't, I, I've, I've been in some conversations with David in terms of Chemran. It, it is, it is a dead-end street that ends at this easement that goes through to Lefty Gomez Field, and that easement itself is, I think, eight feet wide, something like that. And I don't think it is meant to be exclusive at all, and, and that's why the pavement markings are not going there. But I think David, especially as a traffic engineer, didn't feel comfortable indicating that a five-foot sidewalk was the only way that pedestrians and bicycles were supposed to go together. And, you know, that the pavement markings lead up to that point, and then there's some signage along Chemran, just to, you know, make awareness that, that, you know, midway along the block, and then at the, um, at the easement. And the, the sidewalk basically is, has a bright yellow marker getting onto it. And, you know, having not spoken with David exact, you know, because he is out of town right now, and basically, we saw these maps submitted to us, you know, I, I talked to him briefly by email about it, where he said, well, you know, he, he, um, you know, gave the reasons which I said earlier, you know, but I couldn't elaborate further on his thinking. I can understand that thinking, you know, and basically, the policy of White Hill School is to try to get all bicycles and pedestrians off of Glen Drive completely, especially because they're under construction at this point, and there's a lot of buses that access White Hill School there, and it's, and a lot of passenger cars, and it's really dangerous up there. And so there was a series of meetings with the principal of White Hill School, as well as representatives from the neighborhood, and kind, trying to come up with a viable solution for this. And pretty much, this pathway along the side of Lefty Gomez was picked as, as, as the safest alternative.
Yeah, I think safety, whenever we're talking about our kids and biking, becomes very relative. But yeah, I appreciate that we're making, we're making that effort, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's never, you know, nothing in the world is ever perfectly safe, and so, like, Safe Routes to School is kind of, you know, I'm... what Safe Roots to School is kind of, you know, you wonder legally about that name, but basically you try to do the best job that you can and I know that with the spine, the thought was, you know, I mean, it doesn't go past the Cascade Gates and it doesn't go past this junction here, but it does connect to a pedestrian alley right there with a backstreet which is Dominga, which connects to a bike lane that goes to the east end of Fairfax. It's not perfect and we all know that and it'd be nice to live in a perfect thing, but with limited funding and stuff, this is as good as we could do right now with $110,000, so.
Okay, and this is going to be on our agenda next month?
It's a start, you know, the west end, you know, there's probably half a million dollars in infrastructure improvements we need to make. I mean, I think it should, traffic coming off White Hill should be controlled, there should be a light, there should be a pedestrian island, but, you know, we're not getting that funding, you know, that money's going elsewhere and I think we all know where it's going. It's not being invested in our domestic economy, it's, you know, it's being siphoned off into various projects that, you know, I don't think we want to have that conversation, but this is a start and when we got into it, we recognized it as such, but we need to push and we need to prod to get the additional money, you know, to make it 100%. So, this, you know, this is just a piece of it and as we discussed, you know, we have a lot of unmet infrastructure needs and hopefully this is going to make it more safe until, you know, piece by piece, you know, we complete it.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back, I mean, we're kind of, I think we've done our discussion and consideration and it will be back on the agenda for next month. If there's no other comment, I think we'll move on to item number 10 and this one is yours, David.
Great, Mimi, come on up. This is the second reading and adoption of ordinance 766 and as we discussed back on July 11th, I'm the gung-ho-din carrying the water from Mimi's excellent idea here. We all know Mimi from her work on the Open Space Committee and even more importantly, her work as an attorney with the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. She came to council and asked us to consider something that certainly flies below the radar of environmental protection but is exceedingly important as the memo that I carry but that Mimi has in significant measure drafted for us. So, unless the council has particular questions about the importance of this or the approach that we're taking from a regulatory stature, I would ask the council to adopt this ordinance.
Any discussion from council? Any comment, Mimi, do you want to make any?
Yay.
Very good.
Well, with that, I would-
Can I see if there's any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to you, David.
Yeah, I would move that we waive second reading of ordinance 766 and authorize the introduction by title only.
Second.
Motion, Winesoff, second, O'Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. The next one, number 11 is-
No, 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 now we have to adopt-
Oh, sure, you're right, here you go, sorry.
We have to adopt, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 766, ordinance adding 712-170.
Second.
Motion, Winesoff, second, O'Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries as well.
Thank you, Mimi.
Thank you, Mimi, thank you, David. Number 11, item number 11 on our regular agenda is also yours, David.
Let me just plug on to it here. On a number of occasions to apprise the Marin community of the extraordinary amount of government that it takes to govern us, a little too over the top and certainly with a little tongue-in-cheek, their most recent missive, preschoolers learn to share, can local government. The town drafted and was required to respond to a number of points that the grand jury raised and I thought that we could do a better job of more fully responding and respecting the grand jury's efforts in this regard and so I took it upon myself for the council's consideration, but it's item R4 of the report, to highlight in two paragraphs, first, the consolidation efforts that we've made on the fire side, bringing in Sleepy Hollow Fire Protection District as a full voting member of the JPA and of course, more recently, the Town of Ross, bringing us into sort of a four-part voting JPA and if I had a dream, it would probably swallow up a few other fire departments along the way. And also the extraordinary work of staff and Chief Moore to reach out to do dispatch service for the Town of Ross and the College of Marin. However, in the second paragraph, I want to note that this council, at my urging, has also addressed what the grand jury refers to as institutional duplication, found in the operation of the Ross Valley Sanitary District. Larry mentioned the consolidation effort that is hopefully underway. We have expressed our communication over their rate increases and we have recommended that they consolidate in the, in some form, hopefully with the full four member agencies, including CMSA. So, with that, I would like to bring to the council's opportunity to support staff's response in significant measure to the grand jury, but with regard to the recommendation of R4 to adopt the language that I've recommended.
Comments from council? John?
Go ahead, sorry. Okay. Yeah, and, I mean, this report is good as far as it goes, I mean, but really, we're looking at a number of situations where, you know, areas where we have the water district, for instance, also having pipes that aren't so good and then utility companies that, you know, also dig up the street regularly and it seems like every time something breaks, you know, somebody other or other has to hire a whole crew to dig up a street and then replace whatever it is and then cover it back up again and then repave the street and then what do you know, a year later, somebody else is getting rich doing that. And it seems like one idea that could be explored and of course, it would be expensive at the outset, which, you know, you got to come up with the money for that, but if there is, in a way, like a conduit, a raceway under the street where basically you could put in a new pipe, you know, switch out another one and you're not digging up the street every time, you know, I mean, obviously, it's, we have a mini version of that with manholes and then pipes connecting to it, but if you had, in effect, a raceway or a conduit where a number of different pipes could go through and be accessed a lot more easily and inspected in the long run, I can only think that that would save some money. That was just an idea and I know it's not written up in the thing and perhaps that shouldn't be included, but that's an idea.
Okay, I know Larry wanted to go on.
I just wanted to comment on the language on the Ross Valley Sanitary District. You know, the last sentence here says Ross Valley Sanitary has not consolidated services. Well, it's not for a single agency to consolidate services. The conclusion of the consultant was that the only consolidation scenario that will save the ratepayers' money is a complete consolidation of four separate utility districts and the consultant has not made recommendations about how you equalize revenue or governance and I think to some extent, the Ross Valley Sanitary District and probably by its own making, has become a bit of a scapegoat for the duplication of services among the various sewer agencies. It was interesting to note, for example, that of all the sewer agencies, which are, there's three, there's Corte Madera, San Rafael and Ross Valley. Ross Valley actually has the highest level of service, so when they actually did an age rating of the infrastructure, Ross Valley had 60% useful life on its infrastructure compared to 40% for Corte Madera and I think some similar number in the 40s for San Rafael. So, in spite of all its drama and problems, it's actually, has been succeeding in putting pipe in the ground and actually delivering service. It happens to be the biggest district in terms of mileage of pipes, although not population served, but it literally is, I think, has the biggest geographical area because the north end of San Rafael is La Scalina's Sanitary District. So, I think the language should be changed or the last sentence should be just knocked out of it, that Ross Valley has not consolidated services. This is going to be a very delicate dance for these four agencies to come together on governance and finance and so I just don't think Ross Valley should be singled out for, you know, the fact that these districts haven't consolidated because what we're being told is that in order to equalize the situation financially, San Rafael and Corte Madera are going to have to invest more money, so that rate base is going to have to put more money in so that they get up to the service level that San Rafael, that Ross Valley Sanitary is actually delivering. So, that all being said, I think that last sentence really is a little, should be excised.
I'd be happy to excise it, after all, it is self-evident, they haven't consolidated services because if they had, we wouldn't have written the paragraph.
Right, but my point is, it takes four to tango here, there's four separate agencies and, you know, there's a lot of little things to be worked out among those agencies, both financial and governance, so I just, I'm just, I think, you know, they're going to have to take a pretty serious look at going forward with it and I think we should encourage them to do that, but like I said, it's going to take the cooperation and coordination of a lot of different agencies to make that happen.
Okay, Ryan, you have-
Yeah, you know, I think all of us have a responsibility to identify institutional duplication. I think that that's why we're here as leaders of the community is to try to represent the people of our town and our community. I think that's kind of a no-brainer and it says here, "Bring leadership vision and openness to new, more cost-effective alternatives." I think that is a lofty goal and one that we should always concentrate on. I'm a little hesitant to back any language at this time based on the recent shakeup that has just occurred in the Ross Valley Sanitary District with the manager and the issue with Mr. Richards. There's a lot of hot issues going on with that by itself. They had a new changeover of the personnel there. I do support vision and openness to new, more cost-effective alternatives, I think we would be ignorant not to address those anytime we can, but it's difficult for me to back anything just yet because I haven't seen the new board at work, I haven't seen the information coming back from how it's going to shake out and that's why I'm a little hesitant.
This is telling the grand jury what we have done, not what we will do. We have communicated to them. This is telling, they are saying to us, "What have you done to advance this goal which we have set out?" And this is telling them, "This is what we've done, we've consolidated here, fire, police, and this is what we have addressed with regard to things that are also on our plate because these are our constituents." It is not aspirational, it is responsive or historical.
If I may, I remember addressing the concern over the spiraling rate increases. I don't recall recommending that it consolidate with Central Marin, is that something that we did as a body before I was here?
What's his, the general manager, Richards, came, gave a expanded explanation of his, what he was doing with the district and that issue was addressed with him, certainly by me.
And when was that, was that before I was on the council?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, that's why, okay.
Is there specific language that you are requesting change on?
Well, I think for me, being the newest member of the council, that of course, I would have, as anyone would, a concern for the rate increases because I think that's a very logical choice. I am not prepared to talk about the consolidation without doing more homework and getting up to speed with the rest of you, though.
Not recommending, it's responding to what we've already done. That's what this is about.
Mike, I don't know that the council, whether our resolution recommended consolidation or not, so, you know, if we're really going to talk about whether, if it's historical or reflecting our action, I don't recall whether we did that or not.
It's not saying that we did that, it's saying that we communicated to the district its concern over rate increases and recommended that, yeah, you're right, it is saying that.
Yeah, it's right, it's recommending that we consolidate-
But it says, "And has recommended that it consolidates-"
Right, and I don't know whether we've done that or not.
I think it was much, part of a much bigger conversation where, you know, it's, there's a lot of apples and oranges there, I mean, there's different pension obligations there, there's different condition of pipes and I remember talking about that.
So, can we modify the language to say that we have asked them to look at consolidating services because we've certainly done that? We haven't necessarily recommended that it does consolidate, but we have certainly recommended that it study consolidation. Is that language that feels, which, exactly?
Yeah, and they've done it.
Which they have done and, you know, maybe we just say, "Recommended that it consider consolidating sanitary services with Central Marin." I mean, I don't think at this point, you know, given how the changes that they're going through, you know, and the new board, I mean, there's, I think, a growing consensus over there that they've got to do something to reach out to the ratepayers. I mean, the one thing the consultant said is, there's, there are many millions of dollars of unmet infrastructure need. I mean, the district's 100 years old, there's wooden pipe in the ground, so, you know, the problem really has been that they haven't gotten, been able to communicate effectively to the ratepayers in a way that gets, builds a consensus towards doing it, but, you know, it was very much demonstrated that there is a real need, you know, and so, I guess, you know, I think a little gentle reminder is, would be effective here because-
Let me change the language to say, "And has recommended that it consider consolidation of sanitary," to the end of that sentence and strike RVSD.
Right.
Perfect.
Right, that'd be great.
Is there, so, John, you had made a point about tearing up the street, is there language you want to add on that? I mean, it's kind of outside of our-
It's outside of this.
It seems, I mean, we're responding to their report and I think it's outside of that, but since, you know, it's a public, you know-
Gotcha.
It's a publicly recorded situation, I think it's certainly worth noting, I think that's a, it would be interesting to see what that would look like, but it's outside of this.
Okay. Other comments from council? Any other language that, okay, any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and ask for a motion to approve with those changes.
So moved.
Motion, Winesoff, second, Bragman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thanks, David, for working on that. Ryan, let's give a update on number 12 here for FEMA.
Again, this is in regard to the FEMA flood map updating meeting and the impact it's going to have on the property owners of our town and our area and again, like the budget and having it on the agenda every month is very important so that we can actually show that we're really trying to reach out to these people. I was on vacation, but Judy put together this report for me, but again, it's nothing new that we haven't talked about, but it is very important, I think that we have a very brief discussion as many times as possible. I did talk to Mark Lockerbie this morning in regard to the next steps. So, briefly, that the FEMA officials conducted a meeting at Drake High School, June 28th, about the new flood maps of the Ross Valley. The new flood maps designate floodways that the highest hazard zones, including areas that have 1% chance of flooding each year. There was a lot of pushback in the meeting. Again, I don't want to repeat anything that's gone over, but the fact that this will be televised may help reach out to people, so I don't want to skip some things, but the maps that were presented on June 28th were working versions of the preliminary maps and people who wanted to challenge the maps had the ability to do so, but people that are in these flood zones, A, probably don't know about it yet and B, will dramatically be affected with costs of insurance and mandatory insurance unless you outright own your home. I think any federally backed, excuse me, any federally-backed loan may have to have this insurance and a lot of homeowners have said, "Hey, I'm in this map, but I haven't flooded ever, I've been here 30 years, why am I doing-"
ever, I've been here 30 years, why am I doing this?" So, in an attempt to really make sure we reach out to the people, to let them know, I, in speaking with Mark today, that there is no date for the main meeting, that this information will come out, but there, but when it does come out, there will be a morning session to deal with insurance and real estate issues, and then the afternoon for residents and the evening for residents will also cover, focusing more on the insurance aspects. There'll be a mailer and a walking piece, the mailer will go out from the town, and the walking piece that we talked about, we need to get out one week before the actual meeting, and the approximate date of that meeting is going to be in October sometime, with the final changes taking effect, where people have to have this work done by approximately October 2013. So, again, I ask for support of the council in walking the precinct that's most affected. I think it's really crucial that the people who are most affected of this, A, get the mailer, but B, get it walked, and they'll see these two pieces that will come to them, and they will get involved, and the premise being is that I would just hate to see somebody come in here and say, "I didn't know," and the reason for walking would really to show them that, hey, we're really trying to get the message out there and try to help you, because once these new flood maps come into place, they're really going to be dealt a hand that they have to deal with, and at least we can provide them the opportunities to help out the concepts, and also for the planning to be aware that they may get a flood of applications, and our job to work as best as possible with these people to streamline within our guidelines, to help them, help themselves, so that they can feel as though that they were included and not just bound by the issues.
And if people want to protest their location on the map, or their designation on the map, what is the route that they should take for that?
And that's unclear for me at this stage, but all this will be outlined for them through the appropriate channels, so that's what those meetings are for, so that when they, when this meeting comes down, that everybody gets to go find out the ways and the avenues that they need to take, I think it would be a great idea for the website from the town to say, you know, really streamline, if you want to contest this, click this link, do this, do this, do this, do everything we can to signpost the avenues for people, give them the resources, that, I mean, we don't have the manpower to call on behalf of any one person, but if we can show them the roadmap of how they do it, I think that's as far as we can go, reach out for the outreach to tell them what's going on, and B, provide them the resources to find their own questions, and then, at least, I think we as a council and a community with good conscience said we did everything we could to try to help out for what we don't have control over.
Good, and I think we've certainly given you support that we'll help you, we'll help you walk. Larry, did you have?
Yeah, just on what they can do, so, they can be in a flood zone, and the flood zone just crosses a corner of their property, and then they get hit for the insurance, and it turns out, well, the house is at a higher elevation, so what they need to do is if they get stuck in the flood zone unfairly, there is a process to contest it, you have to have a survey done, and you have to prove yourself out, you have to prove that the structure is above the 100-year floodplain, so, you know, it's costly and it's tedious, but there is an opportunity for folks to do it, and, you know, it does happen, because some of our lots are big enough where the house is actually at a different elevation, so, more will be revealed, but I think the most important thing is Ryan's emphasis on getting the word out and letting people know that what's happening and that we want to help them as much as we can, because it is a pocketbook issue, it's expensive.
It certainly is, and, living myself adjacent to a creek, I mean, a lot of these houses have been built decades and decades ago, as mine has, and, you know, where the creek floods has been taken into consideration, you know, that, yes, the creek floods under my property, but I know that the water doesn't come into the house. So, the term for what you need to get in that case is a certificate of elevation, and it's done by a certain type of surveyor, and basically, they shoot survey marks from known flood, high-water marks, and determine where that is in relation to the front door of the house and other things like that, and that is a tedious and long process, I know, I've talked to my insurance company and gotten, you know, a break on rates for a couple of years until I can get it together to get the actual certificate of elevation, and it's not easy to get, I mean, you need to, you know, it's probably worth a number of neighbors getting together and hiring a surveyor to do a number of properties at once, and then you get the, you know, the, you know, a mass discount package or something like that, because they're out there shooting marks for one house, they could do another one without as much work, so, it really behooves people to pay attention and talk to each other and find out what they've got to do to protect themselves.
Any other comments from council on this report? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move on. We have discussion, item number 13, discussion and consideration of the option of Resolution 1252, resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, establishing a protocol for the placement of items on the council agenda. Judy?
Hi, well, I won't bore you reading the report, but we've done, we have some unwritten rules about how it works, putting something on the agenda, and the mayor approves the agenda, and we've have an understanding that any council member can put something on the agenda, and in discussions with Councilmember Winesoff, it seems appropriate to set a standard or a protocol for how to do this, so if something goes on the agenda, this would formalize it to say that that would be accompanied by a report, this would, this would let the public know what's going to be talked about and decided, and it would give more transparency to the business that we're doing, and as far as how this gets done, Ryan mentioned he was on vacation, I'm familiar with the topic, wasn't very difficult for me to do a report, the staff is available to help council members with issues and doing the actual report, and I think this is very doable, and recommend that you consider adopting this resolution to formalize it.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from council?
I think this is...
Go ahead, Ryan.
I think this is a great idea, just giving a little background on what's going to be talked about, if you have any questions, it's easy to go ask your questions and do some homework before you get here, no-brainer.
Great, any other ones?
And also for members of the public, I mean, there have been some pretty simple things on the agenda in the past, which, basically, the title of what the question is, is pretty descriptive of what it's about, but I guess this gives more info than that.
Larry?
We actually have an ordinance that addresses this to some extent, ordinance 2.08.090, which I actually drafted back in 2008, and I've put a lot of agenda items on the agenda over the years, and I usually draft them and type them myself, I don't rely on staff to do that, and I don't necessarily think it's a great idea to put the responsibility on staff to type council reports, staff's got more to do, we're an independent body to some extent, and I think we should be responsible for our own work, so, the aspect of the resolution I have a problem with is that, where it says, "Town staff will prepare the text of all memoranda in a standardized format approved by the time clerk," you know, I mean, they got, there's enough for them to do, and, I mean, I do think the public deserves written explanation of what we're doing and why we're doing it, but, no, I don't think that it needs to be filtered by staff, I think we, you know, if we put our name on something, it should come from us, I don't think it should be deracinated by going through official town, you know, processes, so, I disagree with it, and in that respect, I do think, you know, having the respect of putting, you know, your proposal in writing is worthwhile, I do agree with that.
Is there language that you would recommend to change for that?
Since I wrote this, let me address this, first of all, the thing that you, I think, are referring to, I read over that section, and I was here for that, that was about council action with, if I'm correct, was about council action about things that were, you know, not of specific town residents, in other words, issues that are foreign policy and things like that, I don't want to rehash all of that, but if I'm remembering the section correctly, and I did go back in to see council powers and council, it's the end of that section, and that was specifically written to address those sorts of circumstances when they would be placed on the agenda and things like that. I can see what you're saying here, this was not designed to have council filter our memoranda, it was, in a sense, to create a standardized format in which to present the material only, so, what I was hoping is Judy's staff would say, "Hey, going forward in the future," and I think when you looked at this agenda and filtering through it, there really is a style in which all of our stuff could be placed on the agenda, oddly enough, the ones that I wrote, that Judy just inserted, don't fall into that style, but I really like the way that the town staff's style is very direct and cogent, and would give a historical importance if people look back on this in a few years, as I certainly think they would, so, that last, that fourth whereas really is not about the staff taking our material and massaging it, it's more just putting it into the format, if we ourselves do not do that, and of course, staff could simply send us the template into which we then insert our stuff, removing their, the burden from them in the circumstance.
That's fine, and I appreciate it, I just would get rid of that paragraph, you know, everybody's trying to get their work in, you know, we've got a deadline, we've got to get our stuff in a week ahead of time, and, you know, I do think that the proponents of agenda items have the duty, you know, and the responsibility to type their own memoranda and to format their own work, and not to lay it on staff.
And I agree with you, so I would say, Judy, let's take out the last whereas, and I would say, send to all existing and make a note to all future council members, when you give them a little talk about their work coming up, here's the format, when you, and they probably appreciate it, here's the format, when you submit something, boom, put it right here.
You know, great, you know, internal culture, I'm all for, creating more work and more bureaucracy, no, I disagree with it, so, if we can get rid of that, whereas, I'm good.
With that change, I'll move Resolution 12-52.
Let's, I have to officially ask for public comment, even though we're clearly not going to get any, and then I close that.
If there's no public...
Do I still have to ask when there's no public? Go ahead, David.
With the, with the no comment from the public, I would move Resolution number 12-52.
Second.
Motion, Winesoff, second Bregman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries as modified. And our next is number 14, adoption of Resolution 1243, resolution of Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, continuing implementation of all the requirements of the Brown Act during the state of California's three-year suspension of state mandates, as contained in AB 1464 and SB 1006. David, this one's yours, too.
Judy and I collaborated on this, and I might say, I received a call today from the Marin Association of Realtors, I think there was a piece this morning in the IJ about this, as the state nickel and dimes its way toward insolvency, it has decided that these very important requirements are state mandates that they will no longer reimburse us for, this happened in the past, but we go about our task with great fidelity and attention to the importance of the Brown Act, and here we have a situation that calls for simply, the state can take its own path, but we will show great attention to not just what the Brown Act says, but to the spirit of what the Brown Act speaks to, openness of government is critical and is the hallmark of government in Fairfax. So, this Resolution 12-53 implements and ensures the continuing implementation of the requirements of the Act during this, at the moment, three-year suspension of these select provisions of the Brown Act, and I would ask, in the spirit of Fairfax government, that we adopt it after public comment.
Any comments from council?
I'll comment.
Go ahead, John.
You can still go. Okay, I mean, what the state has done is basically said that they're not going to pay for certain sections of the Brown Act, and the fact of the matter is, is they haven't been paying now for a couple of years anyway, and we're still complying with this Brown Act, and the, a lot of the Brown Act still applies, and I think that, you know, it's an important open government thing, and this is what we're starting initializing tonight with the broadcast or the televising of this, yes, the Brown Act costs money, and, you know, you have to go through all these channels, but transparency in government is really important and really crucial, and, yes, I think it's a no-brainer that we need to reaffirm that, and I think probably, well, I hope, we will see this all over the state, so, thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
I just was going to ask Judy, have we ever gotten reimbursed from the state of California for our Brown Act compliance?
Yes, we used to, I think it's probably been five years, maybe, since we've gotten reimbursement, we have claims in, and, but we haven't actually received any money for quite a while, but we did use to get them, yeah.
Okay.
Sure, those will be rolling in anytime now.
We've been complying as best we can for the last five years, haven't we?
Oh, we do, yeah, we do the same, we, you know, it hasn't changed what we do, but we haven't been paid for it.
I think it's a good idea for us to make it official and just say, "We're going to continue to do that."
Well, and I think a lot of cities are doing that, to make it clear that they are continuing, so...
And I really appreciate your efforts and vigilance in that regard, it's really reassuring for me, and, you know, I'm on the inside looking out, so, for the public, I mean, it's very good that we're reaffirming this tonight.
I agree. Any other comment, anything from the public, seeing none?
I'll move Resolution 12-53.
Motion, Winesoff.
Second.
Second, O'Neil, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, motion carries, thank you very much, that's a good one. Item number 15, discussion and consideration of enacting an ordinance to give the Town of Fairfax further tools to abate fire danger from unmaintained bank-owned properties. John, this one's yours.
Yeah, and it's, it is mine, it's, you know, I've got a report here that details, it uses one example property in Fairfax, it's not the only bank-owned property in Fairfax, but it, the occupants of this property, 84 Pine, have not lived there for four or five years, something like that, they, you know, received a notice from the bank that they were able to pay their mortgage, and the bank took over the property, and our fire chief has been working to ask the bank to abate the huge fire danger that this property causes to its neighbors, it's at the bottom of a very hot and very dry hill, there's a lot of properties above it on the slope, it has Scotch broom that's 15 feet high or more, it's covered all over the place with lots of dry plants that have, you know, been, you know, basically, it's a tinderbox waiting to go up, and currently, I mean, I think the chief has been having a lot of problems even establishing that the bank actually owns it, I think it's a difficult process to go through, the, there's been a number of cities in California that have put extra things in, ordinances in, that give more powers, recently, in the news, the city of Oakland and the city of Richmond were also doing that, they have, you know, their foreclosed properties are even more, they get used as dumping grounds or, you know, places for drugs or prostitution to happen, fortunately, we don't have problems quite on that scale, however, fire danger is perhaps even a larger threat to life and property, and it's not to be disregarded. What the Oakland ordinance, for example... for example, does is that it establishes an earlier point at which time a bank is responsible to abate that, and fines them, you know, a lot of money per day. I think it's a thousand bucks. I forget exactly what Oakland's is, but a thousand is a typical amount. And what do you know, they go in and then they abate the problems in these properties. There have been complaints from banks. They say, well, you can't prove that we own it, and you have to jump through all these legal hoops to get there. And, you know, you know, then it ends up in the courts, and I think Councilman Bragman was referring to, you know, when it gets into the courts, then there's a whole legal proceedings, you know, and you kind of look for a little crease in the law that allows them to get away with something that threatens their bottom line. But really, when their bottom line is threatening our communities, I think that we need to do something. And I guess I put this on here for discussion among us as a council, and also, I'm appreciative that David Wainsoff has communicated with, you know, being on the legislative committee, has communicated with the--
League of Cities.
League of Cities to find out what other cities have done, and then also in our packet there is a letter back there detailing some of that. They don't take a position on it, but they coordinate communication between, or they, they gave us a list of other cities that have taken action. And basically, I want to put it out there to see whether there is support on the council for following this further.
Yes.
Yes, from David. Ryan?
I would like to hear from the fire department. A couple of things. One is enforcement, you know, how, how is this going to be enforced? Is it something we're passing on paper, or is there something more to it that we're going to be able to actually back up? Two, is it possible to do the work and place a lien on the property? I don't know if that's legal to do. Jim?
I'd agree.
So--
Yeah, and I talked, I talked to the chief today, too, but I'm sure Jim will say the same thing. In our ordinance, we already have the ability to declare, the fire department does declare it a public nuisance without court action being required. It's not quite like our abatement process. They're, part of the ordinance is that they have to diligently pursue the owner, and I think that's, can be time-consuming and problematic. But, Jim, you probably have more information on this particular situation.
I'm, whoa, that sounds pretty loud. Jim Hansen, I'm a battalion chief of the Ross Valley Fire Department, serving the Town of Fairfax.
Let me try that other microphone. There you go.
In the chief's absence, I'm prepared to answer any questions about vegetation hazards near structures for abatement, and as a separate item, if you want any detailed information about that specific Pine Drive address. So, the California Fire Code is commonly adopted by local organizations, and the Town of Fairfax, on recommendation by, by the fire department, regularly adopts the changes in the fire, in the fire code, in the California Fire Code. And this lies under the California Fire Code, Chapter 49, in terms of vegetation hazards around structures. The Town of Fairfax has adopted that, and in the town code, I think it's Title VIII, and there's a specific section, 8.04.010, that is already on the books in the Town of Fairfax that applies for abatement of vegetation hazards around structures.
Because I have spoken to the chief in the past, and I live adjacent to the, to the wall property, or as I like to refer to it as the breeding ground at home for all of the broom that you could ever imagine, not to mention dead oak and all sorts of things. And the, it's an absentee ownership. As John's pointing out, how come we haven't gone after the current owners of, of that property to say, hey, you've got to clear this out?
Tonight, I don't have specific information to answer specifically the, your question. What I, what I am prepared to share with you is that the abatement process for clearance of vegetation hazards around structures, as far as I'm aware of, we've never exercised that to the point in the code, in the Town of Fairfax code, where the Ross Valley Fire Department Board actually ultimately, there's a specific process, there's a due process, and through this process, it's very time-consuming. It's, and you have to prove diligence in trying to locate the owner, et cetera, and ultimately ends up being a lien against the property. And the fire board declares that abatement is necessary. The fire chief is ordered to follow, start the abatement process. And the fire board, through this process, ultimately, this is just a, a short capsulated version of it, the fire board makes a special assessment, and a registered letter gets sent to the assessor, and it gets a lien on the property. And, and once that is all in place, the cost of the fire department clearing the property gets assessed to the, to the property itself.
But you're go, it's fascinating, because you're going in a different direction than what I think John is going to. John is going toward a fining system in which the fines add up so voluminously over time, let's say $365,000 a year, that even Bank X would have to sit up and take notice of what's happening to their bottom line. In fact, it would eat up probably the value of the property. And so, they will get out and do the work rather than placing it upon our administrative bodies with its limited resources to do it. So, it's, 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 I think, it's an inverse process of exactly what John's talking about. Rather than, why should we be burdened with the task of your bank's negligence in this important matter? Why should we be burdened with that? You should do the work. You should, you own the property. You should be the steward of the land and, and do what everybody else in Fairfax does with regard to proper maintenance, with regard to fire.
What I, how I would respond to that tonight, given the time that I have in 27 years here, that's a great topic for the fire chief at a fire board meeting. It would be an excellent agenda item. And what I can tell you is, this, this address on Pine Drive popped up on our radar during our annual inspections last summer, and it actually ended up on my desk in August. And at that time, I was able to establish that Bank of America, the whole moral of this little story is that the first issue we're having right now immediately is finding out who has ownership of the property. I don't have the expertise and I, to, to, to give you that answer or navigate that, but what I can tell you is, last year, personally myself, I went to Bradley Real Estate, who handled the sale of that property, last time it was sold, exhausted all resources there, went to a local real estate agent who is well-known in the county that handles foreclosures. He informed me that the only way, once the banks have ownership, they assign it to a foreclosure agent to move the property, and then that's the person that you can go to. The B of A, through our process, there's reference to a ticket number in the, in the staff report. There's been apparently multiple ticket numbers issued by our inquiry last year, and again, our inquiry in last month. And it's a big, it appears to be a big quagmire right now. I don't have the exact answer tonight on how to navigate that, but I think it's a great agenda item for the fire board and the fire chief, and it's going to be, from my experience here, I think it's going to be more of a learning process with all, everybody together as we navigate this. But one thing I just want to note, to make real clear, Chapter 49, that, in the California Fire Code that was adopted by the Town of Fairfax, which is now your Title VIII, is just specific to vegetation hazards around structures. It doesn't address the blight issues that the SF Gate printouts in the staff report refer to. So, in terms of the fire department's reference, you have something on the books. There is an abatement process. It's handled at the board level with the fire chief, and the fire chief's intent is to go ahead and follow this through according to this property complaint, according to the Title VIII in the, in the town code, but do it step, in step with the fire board members as well.
Since John and I both have a jones on for this issue, and by happenstance happen to both sit on the fire board, if you'd be so kind as to express to Joanne, to agenda as this for the, for the next meeting in the next month or so, I think John and I would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take care of that for you.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, my sense is, too, that, you know, that sounds like a cumbersome process, and if there's a way that we can, you know, have an ordinance that's either done through the fire or done through the individual communities, to make that process less cumbersome, that would be ideal, I think, for everyone involved. And I think Jim has a--
My understanding of the Oakland and the Richmond ordinances is they go beyond just fire dangers. It's the broader topic of blight. So, what you may want to do, in addition to working with the fire board, is get copies of those ordinances and have them at your next meeting and see how they work.
Sounds like a good idea.
In, we've, my brothers and I inherited some property in Wisconsin, and the city sends us a letter saying, either you cut down the weeds, or we're going to do it and charge you. So, I don't know if we have a weed abatement ordinance here, but something like French broom or Scotch broom, you know, has so clearly been identified as an invasive, you know, vegetation, it would, I mean, I want to look into the whole blight thing because it's a much bigger issue, but for this immediate situation on, on Pine, we, might we look into just a we, simple weed abatement ordinance where we can just send a notice to the last known address of the owner and say, hey, you know, either you take care of it, or we're going to take care of it. And, you know, we put a lien on the property and, you know.
Cool. Currently, right now, that's your Title VIII, and, and, and there, the first step is deeming that situation a public nuisance.
Yeah, and the, the process I'm familiar with, they don't go through that whole public nuisance thing. I mean, it's just, they have an ordinance. If your weeds are too high--
Right.
If you don't cut them, we're cutting them, and you can pay us--
That's, it might be specific to the state of Wisconsin, because what you've adopted here is the state of California.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, maybe outside the fire code, you know, we could just do like a vegetation abatement ordinance, a simple vegetation abatement ordinance.
Well, and that's a point that you can bring up at the fire board to represent the Fairfax council.
So, it may be a little simpler to make that determination.
Yeah.
Oakland does the same thing. Yeah, I was going to say, I've, I've known that exactly those letters going out in the city of Oakland, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe, you know, just to address the situation on Pine.
And then quicker, yeah.
Yeah, but I think, you know, just, and I don't want to take a lot of time, I do think it's worth looking into that whole thing, because, you know, that neighborhood did have a house, not where prostitution was occurring, but there was definitely like drug activity and, you know, some somewhat unsavory activity going on, and it became a big problem. So, we are not immune from that. We have our own little variant of it, you know. But, you know, relative to our standards of living here, it's, you know, a problem that I think we need to address. So, I, you know, appreciate you bringing it to us.
Me, too. All right, I think you know how to proceed. Our final item, Number 16, discussion of the status of cable casting, web streaming of council meetings. Larry?
So, that, that speaks for itself, and really maybe should get put over to the next meeting, because that'll actually be publicly broadcast meeting. So, this, all this equipment was paid for by the Marin Telecommunications Agency. So, you know, and the other thing that we're doing with, with the crew, the staff, is we're supporting the Community Media Center. So, it's a, it's a good thing. It's a great institution we're supporting. And I do think we're going to create like a little First Amendment sanctuary in here. And I think there's going to be, beyond council meetings, there'll be other public meetings that will be broadcast out of this facility. So, it's, it's, I think, a really good thing for Fairfax to have this equipment in here.
Well done. It's nice to see it come into fruition. All right, let me ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Motion, O'Neil, second. Read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you all very much.